We've called our meeting to order. We appreciate each one of you that's here this morning. We thank you for your presence. If you will, please stand. We will ask Commissioner Wood to offer our indication. Commissioner Kite and Dawson, I believe, will sign our pledge of allegiance. It's Commissioner Wood.
Mr. Gray, have a Father. We thank you for this day. Thank you for everything that you do for us, all the many blessings that you give us. Have a Father. We thank you for each one that's come out today and asked your blessings upon us and asked your blessings around these men and around this table that will make the decisions, the wise decisions. You'll give us of your knowledge and understanding and that everything we do will be pleasing to you and good for our county and our individual districts. We thank you for this great country we live in, for the freedoms that are ours and that we enjoy, and we just ask you to continue to bless us as we go on through our life in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please face the light. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Big secret, please. Again, we thank you for your presence this morning. We appreciate each one of you that's here. First item on my agenda is to prove our minutes that you gentlemen have received. Is there any change that needs to be made? If not, are your motion approved? So I'm going to hear second.
Second.
Motion second in discussion. Any favor, if I don't say aye.
Aye.
Anyone post a objection. Thank you. No objection. Uh, you Ben is the vote partner personnel, Mr. Sharp.
Uh, Mr. Rolles is out this week and he asked me to go over some of his personnel issues. He would like to fill a couple of positions. Uh, one is he would like to recommend Richard Smith to replace Dale Thompson in District Four and Josh Nail to replace Garrett Stone in the unit.
That's item two you have, Mr. Sharp.
That's item two. He took one out and then also to post the position for District Four.
Okay. Let's do all that in one motion if that's agreeable to everybody. Any question concerning your recommendation? If not, then your motion is approved.
So moved.
Your second.
Second.
Motion second in discussion. Any favor, if I don't say aye.
Aye.
Anyone post a objection. Thank you. Uh, the item two is engineering annual bid. Mr. Luther.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Each of you should have a package, uh, there in front of you for our annual bids. These are our bid tabs, uh, these are annual bids we do each year for road department. Uh, the first sheet is just the, uh, the award list. You can make it loose. It's just clear up. The others are stapled and I'll just run through these, uh, real quick individually just to, to give some explanation. Uh, the first bid is the hot mix asphalt material. Uh, this is where we just pick up the material with our trucks from the supplier and use it for ourselves. Wiregrass construction, uh, provided a bid of sixty dollars a ton. Typically DeKalb asphalt provides a bid, but, uh, they did not provide a bid this year for some reason. I have not heard from them, uh, so we have sixty dollars a ton from wiregrass. Uh, next item is our concrete. Uh, we received, uh, received two bids, one from Kirkpatrick and one from Southern Concrete. Uh, Southern is a new company that Lambert Construction up in Stevenson has started. They've opened a concrete plant and so they're providing, uh, concrete to, to, you know, Jackson, DeKalb counties and those surrounding areas. And as you can see, Southern is low on all of the items, uh, here and, uh, that'd be my, my recommendation for Southern and, and I'll go through this list at the end for the recommendation, but these are just for you to see the prices. Next item is our corrugated metal pipe. Uh, this is where we provide a list of prices and the vendor gives us a percent discount off of that list. As you can see, Contech Construction Products, uh, gave us a forty percent discount versus a twenty-eight and twenty-five percent, uh, from Harbin. Most of the same, uh, additional charges are, are the same, uh, as they were from the previous bid. Uh, next item is the CRS2 emulsified asphalt. Uh, this is just the liquid asphalt that we purchased and put in our storage tank on the yard, uh, that the guys use in the patch trucks. Low bid was a dollar and thirty-five cents, uh, per gallon from a Blackledge Emulsions.
Just where Blackledge located?
They are, they're in South Alabama, I believe. It may be, uh, Mobile.
That's just from all the information I would collect.
Yes, sir. I believe it's, uh, that's where they're from. And so last year Ergon had the bid, but again, they, they did not submit a bid this year. Have not heard, heard from any of them either.
That's a significant difference.
Yeah, asphalt is coming down this last year. Uh, the prices across the board for the liquid are, are coming down, have been coming down. So, uh, we've been getting a lot of reductions in our, even our annual bid in place paving when we do the adjustments. It's, uh, and even on our federal aid jobs, stuff that we've been doing, we've seen some significant decrease or, or an increase for us, but a de, a decrease in the price for the, the AC adjustment. So it's definitely been going in our favor for a change.
Right.
Uh, the next item is the crushed stone. As you can see, the bids are kind of back and forth. Uh, typically we always honor or award both of these bids, uh, so that we can purchase from, from either Vulcan here in town or from Blunt Springs, uh, just across in Edwak County, depending on what area we're working in, uh, you know, who needs it and where, and can incorporate some of the hauling costs to, to make it more convenient. Next is our greater blades. Um, you can see the first item here, the six-foot blades are marked out. I had forgot to remove that from last year's bid. Um, all of our machines now have fourteen-foot, uh, mold boards, so we only need seven-foot blades, uh, so that six-foot is not needed, so it will not be awarded. But see, we received one bid from Abing Sanz. Just a minimal increase there on those and that's a, uh, I believe that is the price per, per blade. Or it may be per, I can't remember. Maybe it's per hundred. Uh, next is the high-density polyethylene pipe. As you see, Harris Lands and S&amp;S Wholesale had the exact same prices. Uh, however, Harris Lands did not submit their vendor response sheet in the, in the bid submittal, so they are not a responsive bidder. Uh, and we cannot honor that bid without that vendor's response, where they actually sign it, have that signature notarized that they are submitting this bid. It was not included in the package, so it is not a responsive bid, uh, so we would have to, uh, make, make a full award to S&amp;S.
Question. Uh, do they know if they didn't fill out?
No, I haven't spoken to them. Uh, when I send out the letters, I will, I will explain it in the letter as to why.
Have we used the fact that we've been doing the bill thing here?
Yes, we have previously, yes.
In both of them?
Yes, for those, for crews that may be closer here to, to town can run by on their yard and pick them up or the other crews can, can stop there in Raineswell at, at S&amp;S's yard and pick up there. Or we could pick it up and bring it to the, to the yard, but I assume most of the time they probably pick it up at the vendor's yard as needed.
So is this, this will be a kind of inconvenience for some of the crews, uh, you fill up or?
Uh, it may be, but it's, it's really irrelevant. I mean, that's not a responsive bid. We can't accept it without that, without that response. Uh, the next is the, uh, high-density pipe liner. Uh, Isco Industries, they've been the only one that's, uh, bid on this island since we've been doing it and, uh, as you see, most of these prices are down, um, so that's always, always good.
What do you think of that?
I really don't know. It may be just the production of the pipe, the, the cost involved in the materials to, to make the pipe, probably from the petroleum side, those prices are probably down.
Petroleum side are probably down. That's from all, I want to question you if that's from all.
Oh, yes, sir, yes. And actually the, the conditions at the bottom, those freight charges are the same as they were last year, so freight charges hasn't, have not changed. It's just the price for the pipe itself and like I said, it's probably attributable to the, to the reduction in the petroleum costs. Next is high-performance co-patch. This is where a vendor brings their pub mill and liquid to the yard. We can, uh, we provide the rock and they mix it on our yard and then we stockpile for our patching material. And, uh, Hudson Materials was a low bidder. Again, a little bit of reduction in the price. Uh, next is our hot mix asphalt paving. This is the in-place price, uh, where the vendor provides the material and places it for us. Uh, again, uh, wiregrass construction was the only bidder, uh, so minimal increases from last year, a few of them are flat, uh, but some are, you know, this time it's, it's usually around the ten to twelve percent increase, uh, or these are a little bit less than that. And again, probably, uh, you know, even though a reduction in, in the liquid cost, there are still some other, those costs are going to go up. Next is the lubricants. Cedar Buffalo was the only vendor and, uh, here we see that, uh, all of these were either down or were flat from last year. Uh, next is our traffic signs and posts. Uh, as you see, these bids are typically scattered, uh, these amounts and what we've done in the past is, uh, award, honored bids, uh, in the past, we've really honored all of them, uh, but with just G and C just having to, being minimal, I, I would think we would just, uh, we would award, award the signs to Vulcan and traffic signs and then be able to, to choose whichever sign we needed, choose from the vendor that had that lowest price at that time. And then on our signed posts, uh, traffic signs, uh, were low on all of those, so we would, uh, award the bid to Vulcan and traffic sign for the signs and then the posts would be just the traffic signs incorporated. And that's how we did it last year as well. Next is our traffic stripe. This is the in-place. Uh, vendor provides the material and places it for us. Uh, JCG was the low bid this year. Uh, last year they were, were more than likely the low bid, however, they left off the first half of their bid. Uh, they did not include that one sheet, uh, so they were not a responsive bidder either. And as you see, all of these prices are, are either reductions or almost pretty much the same across the board. And then last is the truck haul. Moses Excavating was the only, uh, bidder and their prices were the same as last year and it's been several years since we've used this, uh, but it's something that we've felt like we'd like to keep in place just in case something happens or we have a project come around that, uh, we could use, use a, a hauler on, so those prices are the same.
Gentlemen, you hear Mr. Luther, your recommendation, how the sheet on the front of the package, uh, that recommendation. Award any question about any of the bids?
Uh, I'll say, uh, as I already mentioned, it looked like the majority of the things came down this year and, and, uh, I was disappointed last year to see that so many things that either went up or stayed the same even after it all had came down, uh, but, uh, I'm glad to see that it's starting to work its way down. With the exception of the hot mix asphalt paving, some of their materials actually went up nine percent. If the Hoos need to know why, doesn't have to go up that much with all that record lows.
Uh, that's probably attributable to the, to the stone.
Yeah.
Of the rock prices, which I believe have gone up a little bit even on for us, but I'm sure the, the rock provider, you know, their, their costs have gone up and they're just passing that on.
But there, there were four, four companies that we asked a bid for this and, and only one responded, so that kind of puts us in predicament where we have to go with the one that's kind of a monopoly situation, which is, uh, not good for, for the taxpayers, but that's what we have to do, so.
Gentlemen, any other questions? If not, are your, are your motion, we've sent Mr. Luther's recommendation. Leave the bid awarded.
How much money is that for the annual bid?
Your second.
Second.
Motion second in discussion. Any favor, if I don't say aye.
Aye.
Anyone post a objection. Thank you. No objection. Next item, personnel, Mr. Luther.
Um, as we've discussed a little bit previously, uh, Mr. Greg Skaggs, who's been a longtime engineering department employee, uh, plans to, in October of 2018, he will have thirty years of service with the county and he plans to retire at that time. And what he, I believe he plans to do and most likely it will happen, he will probably retire the early part of 2018 and apply his accrued leave time to finish out his thirty years of service. So he would officially retire with twenty-nine and a half years, apply his accrued leave time and have thirty years of service, uh, to go towards his retirement. And so in losing him, of course, we would, I would need to replace him, uh, with someone. And the biggest thing in losing him is going to be our, our bridge inspections. Uh, of course, he and I have been doing those for a lot of number of years, uh, since I've been here, been certified. And the reason I would like to go ahead and do this now, the type of work that we do, particularly the bridge inspections, require some particular certifications and the things that we have to have, education and training, these certifications that we have to do to fulfill the duties of, of, of the office. And in getting bridge certification, it's a process that takes, it will take well over a year to do based on the things that we have to do. Uh, there's a, there's a little prerequisite class, then there's a two-week class, uh, for, where you actually kind of learn the process of, of inspection and what you're looking at. And then once all of that's done, you have to have at least a one full year cycle of bridge inspections under a certified inspector, so that you're getting a full year's worth of hands-on in the field with someone that's certified. And there's a process and paperwork that we have to file with the state verifying all of that before we can receive those certifications. So, there again, it takes, you know, it's going to take over a year of time to get that done. And what I would like to do, of course, when I took over in 2008, uh, the commission did away with the assistant engineer position. Uh, what I would like to do is ask the commission to consider reinstating the assistant engineer position and allow me to post that, go through the hiring process to have that employee be able to take the place of Mr. Skaggs once he's retired. And in doing this, we'll get somebody with some technical background, some engineering education. Of course, there's so much that's learning on the job, uh, but there's a good background to start with, you know, with an engineering degree. And of course, the state will pay fifty percent of the salary of an assistant engineer as long as it's within their scale. Of course, with, with Greg, you know, state's not picking up any of that because he's not an engineer. Uh, but in doing this, uh, we'll gain that employee, uh, once he's gone. Of course, you know, we'll have three employees for a while during this time, uh, but then once Greg's gone, it'll be, uh, just this one other employee. Fifty percent of the salary is covered and, you know, we'll have somebody to, to provide some technical, uh, you know, technical assistance and background, uh, instead of just, just myself. So I would like to ask if, if y'all would consider doing that today, allowing me to post that. What I'd like to do is, is post it for about thirty days and then take those applications, go through, go through the interview process and all of that, uh, you know, to make a decision whenever, whenever all of that's done.
Uh, thank you. I know we've talked about this lately because we understood how, how the rate is going to pinch at each time. And, uh, two, uh, when we did away with assistant engineer, we actually didn't need it at that time. But now, all of this has changed and Mr. Skaggs leaving and, uh, the state, as he says, will pick up fifty percent of this particular salary as long as it's within their scale. And of course, now they pick up nothing. So, uh, I, I appreciate you bringing that up at this time and I'm fully supportive of that because it not only puts us in a better position, the bridge inspector will have somebody there and he retires, we'll have this man here and he'll actually save us money.
Yes, sir.
At the end of the month, you know, in, uh, time to, uh, to come, just when he retires. So, uh, anyway, we want to put that forward. Gentlemen, if there's any question about it, whether Mr. Luther or somebody, we'd be glad to answer any question like that.
Uh, also a person, Ben, for, for looking ahead and, and preparing for that. It's, uh, this is really a matter of public safety when it comes down to it and it's the bridge inspection is very important and that training, being certified is very important to, and, and as all of us know, our bridges deteriorate, uh, and, uh, we don't have funds to replace a lot of them. It's, it's very important we make sure they're inspected properly. Uh, Ben, Ben has, Ben does a lot. He has a lot to do. Uh, we asked a lot of him and, uh, I think it'd be a, uh, potential savings for the county, uh, in the long run, even though, uh, for the first year, year and a few months, uh, there'll be some extra, but over, over timeframe, especially with fifty percent match from the state, uh, it looks like it'd be a potential savings overall.
Hey, there's no doubt.
It'll always be an advantage to have two, um, engineers with an educational engineering background, working especially in this county with all the road and bridge problems that we have, so it seems very pretty to do this. And I'll, I'll move that we, uh, reinstate the position of assistant engineer and allow Mr. Luther to, to post all these positions.
Mr. Kite, go over here. Second.
Second.
Motion second, Mr. Wood. Yeah, discussion. Any favor, if I don't say aye.
Aye.
Anyone post a objection. Thank you. That's right. So statements, yes. Next item is rural road safety conference.
Thank you. Uh, yes, sir. The, uh, Auburn University and State DOT are going to be, uh, sponsoring and presenting the 2016 Alabama Rural Road Safety Conference. Uh, this conference they've been holding for the last probably three, three or so, three or four years now. Uh, I was able to, uh, attend the first one a couple of years ago. Uh, it's a very good conference and like I said, it's, it's set up specifically for rural road safety, different things that rural counties see and share ideas on how to look at specific problems. Uh, this, uh, this conference is being held at the Lake Gunner'sville State Park Lodge as it was, I re, I believe it's been held there every year, uh, being very close there. And I would just like to ask permission to attend this conference once again, given the being in Gunner'sville, no overnight stays or anything.
Any questions? Something to write?
Yeah. Maybe if possible, the conference is timed ago also. Has he ever been with you on?
I don't think he's ever been to it. Uh, it could be. Most of it is, it's just different types of approaches and treatments for specific, like horizontal curves, um, actually doing road assessments, you know, evaluating roads for specific problems, uh, things of that nature is, uh, mostly what it's, you know, set up for, being able to evaluate specific sites and knowing what applications can work here, you know, what can you do.
What was the cost, don't you?
It's, uh, that's a hundred and fifty dollars.
Uh, 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 as a road, uh, we've got a lot of rural roads. Yeah, yeah, I think everybody knows that. Uh, but, uh, I, I think it'd be very valuable to, uh, Rolles could also go.
Would you include the recommendation if it's possible, Mr. Rolles?
Yes, sir. If he can, that'd be great. It's, it's October the fourth through the sixth. It's a half a day that first day and then a full day and then a half a day. Uh, I think that's a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, again with the bend right there in Gunner'sville, it's, you know, not that far, but undoubtedly they would, they, this would.
I'd like to go, but I can't go. I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second in discussion. Any favor, if I don't say aye.
Aye.
Anyone post a objection. Thank you.
Thank y'all very much. I appreciate it.
Sheriff's Office personnel, Mr. Ed.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, do you want to do these separate or roll them all in or that?
Just, just go through it. All of them.
All right. We would like to, uh, transfer Jerry Weston Forten from a full-time dispatcher to a deputy to replace Jeffrey Bane, who had resigned. Weston has already been certified. The mounted unit, reserved unit paid for him to go to the weekend academy service about a year ago. He's, he graduated, so his pay would, uh, increase from five, five to eight and one. Uh, he's coming out of dispatch. We would like to transfer Sebastian Gomez from, as a full-time corrections officer to a full-time dispatcher to replace Weston. Uh, and also would like to hire Derek Kyle May as a full-time corrections officer to replace Sebastian, who was transferred.
Gentlemen, you hear Mr. Ed's recommendation. Any questions concerning his recommendation?
The revenue usual.
Got it. Any other question? If not, are your motion honored. Questions? So move. Your second.
Second.
Motion second in discussion. Any favor, if I don't say aye.
Aye.
Anyone post a objection. Thank you. Now the other question.
We would like to ask y'all that, uh, if y'all would enter into an agreement with Viewpoint Diagnostics along with the sheriff for X-ray services. This is a X-ray company out of Birmingham. Chief Langley has, has worked with them and, and went through a contract and would leave it a savings, about eighteen dollars per X-ray that they do for us.
Any questions concerning Mr. Edlinson's agreement? It sounds good to me.
Saves money. Yeah. Uh, thanks, thanks to the sheriff, mine and you, Mr. Ed.
May we accept the recommendation to enter into a contract with Viewpoint Diagnostics?
Thank you, Mr. Kite. Go over here. Second.
Second.
Motion second. Indiscussible, certain free. If not, are your motion, uh, have the motion second. Any favor, if I don't say aye.
Aye.
Anyone post a objection. Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Any other? Billy Maitland, fair on the roof, Michelle.
Good morning.
Good morning.
As y'all remember, the core referral building, uh, had some roof damage from a thunderstorm and it's not easy to find flat roof contractors, the type of building, but I've contacted two, uh, Flat Roofers, Alabama Roofers and P&amp;G Construction. Alabama Roofers has a bid ready, but has not sent a proposal at this time. They said they could have it later today. We do have a bid from P&amp;G Construction for the amount of thirty-nine thousand, one seventy-four eighteen. And we do have insurance money available for most of this. Uh, the report from the adjuster shows their claim to be thirty-eight thousand and fifty-two dollars after the thousand-dollar deductible. I recommend we give this bid to P&amp;G Construction and use the option to use the TPO membrane, which is the white energy efficient membrane. It's better than the old scuttled stuff.
Well, it's, it's, for my information, I was on the last year that the insurance paid that much on.
Most of it. Most of it. Any questions?
What was the cutoff for submission of the bids? What was the cutoff for submission of the bids?
They've had, they've had, uh, more than enough time. I don't remember the date. They've had a few months, yes.
Bid was passed. It's, it's passed that day, so, so we have actually one bid, correct?
Yes.
Any other question? There's no other question for your motion, your question.
So move.
Your second.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? If not, are your motion, uh, have the motion second. Any favor, if I don't say aye.
Aye.
Anyone post a objection. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm bound to term and get me to spend.
Fifth item is revenue commission personnel, Mr. Sharp.
Mr. Wilkes is, uh, in my conference today and he asked me to bring a personnel issue up. Uh, Emily Wooden had been a, she'd been a full-time employee until, like, a couple of years ago. Uh, she's been on a lady's absence, came back as a part-time employee in January and he would like to put her back at the pay that she was at before as a full-time employee and that's in the reprisal program.
You hear, uh, Mr. Sharp's statement concerning Mr. Wilkes's request. Any question concerning that? If not, are your motion honored, your question.
So move.
Your second. Fact, motion second in the discussion. Any favor, if I don't say aye.
Aye.
Anyone post a objection. Counsel on the age and, uh, calendar, uh, you have that, I think, in your, thank you on the last page back there and you'll see the, the days and, uh, the holidays that we take per year. It's virtually unchanged about anything, but anyway, Mr. Sharp, you go ahead.
Uh, like I said, they, they normally take sixteen days off, county gets thirteen holidays, so three of those days will be considered an annual leave day. They'll have to take annual leave all the time. But you see the days there and, uh, let's say it's just pretty much the same as what they do every year.
Any question concerning, uh, the holidays gave you, counsel on the age? If not, are your motion honored, Mr. Sharp, your question. Your second.
Second.
Motion second in discussion. Any favor, if I don't say aye.
Aye.
have to take annual leave the whole day, uh, but you see the days there, and, uh, let's say it's just pretty much the same as what they do every year.
Any questions concerning, uh, the holidays gave you, Counselor, the agent, if not, are here motion, honor, Mr. Sharp, question, your second.
Second.
Motion second in discussion, in his favor, let me know if you're saying aye.
Aye.
We thank you for being here today, we appreciate your presence, uh, that concludes our agenda, are here motion, any?
Mr. Earl, what, what, this is my turn, I want to make, make clear, I did, uh, I made a motion on, uh, the, the Emily Wooden transfer to the full time, she is not related to me, that's the one people, I'm a two people, so this is just a clarification, let me make sure everybody understands, uh, no relation.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Wood.